Well, good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to call this meeting, this work session of Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to order. Today is Thursday, January 27, 2022. The time is 9:30 a.m. With us today so far are Commissioner Emily Lindley and our General Counsel Mary Smith. I'm John Neiman. And our third Commissioner is stuck in traffic, we understand. So we're expecting that he will be here in a few minutes. And so until he arrives, we will stand in recess. All right, folks, we're back in session after a short recess. The time is 9:34, and we've got a full dais. Commissioners Lindley, Janeca. I'm John Neiman. General Counsel Mary Smith is here. Ms. Smith, please call the first item.
Item number one is the discussion of ambient air monitoring following natural disasters and industrial accidents from 2017 to 2021, and an upcoming report.
Thank you. And colleagues, before we ask the Executive Director to get us started here, I just wanted to check in with you and see if you all had any comments. Commissioner Lindley?
I do not, thanks.
Commissioner Janeca?
I just want to start off and acknowledge that this is a really important and ephemeral goal that our agency is asked to do by the public in a emerging, moving space. I think that as, as the population of Texas continues to grow and the vibrant industry in our state continues to pop up in new spots, this, this potential only increases. And so as our agency is asked to shift out of our regulatory penalty-directed process to try to respond more immediately to public concerns, that's one that I really take seriously, but it's one that I think we're, we're sensitive to not necessarily having those tools immediately at our fingertips. So I'm, I'm excited to hear, hear more today about this topic. I just recognize this is one of the trickier spaces that our agency is edging into because of public expectation, maybe a little bit less than clear statutory direction at this point, but I'm glad to see us considering it so thoroughly.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I just want to say there are, there are very few things this agency does that are as important as our air quality monitoring. I'm really proud of the work that we do. I have a picture in my office of some of our employees waiting through Harvey floodwaters to, to stand up at a stationary air monitor again. I just look at that, it makes me so proud of them. So I appreciate the work that everybody does to make sure that we're collecting the data and have good data integrity. I'm proud of the, the system that we have in place, and I'm really excited to see it expanding as, you know, Commissioner Janeca alluded, expectations just continue to, to increase around our air quality monitoring and, and, you know, whether we're keeping pace or not with expectations, I guess is a, is, is a personal opinion, you know, I'm glad to see us, you know, continue to expand our monitoring capabilities. So Toby, with that, I'll hand it over to you.
Great, thanks, Chairman. I'm actually not going to say much. I'll turn it over to Craig here shortly, but I just wanted to give, for the folks who are listening, a little bit of context for how we got here. You know, Winter Storm Uri was sort of a, was an unprecedented storm that we, you know, once in a, actually not, not once in a lifetime, once in history storm for the state of Texas. And what happened through that was we had a multiple petrochemical facilities and large industrial facilities that had to shut down or go into an idle mode during that winter storm event. And so we immediately, once it was safe and we could get people on the road, we got out and started doing our monitoring, looking at our stationary monitoring. But then through some internal discussions, we sort of realized that we had a, what I would say is a once-in-history event to monitor possibly the largest startup event in, in history. So every, almost every petrochemical facility from the border with Louisiana all the way down to Corpus had shut down in some capacity, and they were all going to be starting up at about the same time, which, you know, I think there's some conclusions and some assumptions that we all make about the emissions that come off of those facilities when they're in that mode. And so we decided to take advantage of this and deployed a massive amount of assets and, and collected a massive amount of data points in trying to see what is the impact if we have all of these sort of turning on at the same time. And, and it was interesting because I think what you'll hear is that maybe some of our assumptions aren't necessarily correct with, with what we expected to see. And so with that, I will stop, and that just sort of gives the quick background. I'll turn it over to Craig to take it from here.
Thank you, Toby. Good morning, Commissioners. General Counsel, I'm Craig Pritzloff, and I'm the Director of the Office of Compliance and Enforcement. With us today is Dr. Sabina Lang of their Toxicology, Toxicology Division, and we're here to, not, not alone today. We've got some staff here with us. Joining me from the Office of Compliance and Enforcement is Mr. Kelly Cook, Deputy Director of our Critical Infrastructure Division, Mr. Corey Chisholm, Deputy Director of our Monitoring Division, and Jonathan Walling, Area Director for the Coastal and East Texas area. Dr. Lang, if you want to introduce your staff.
Certainly, thank you, Craig. So my name is Sabina Lang, and I'm the Section Manager of the Toxicology Risk Assessment and Research Division. And with me today, I have the other team members who worked on the analyses that you're going to hear about today. So I have Dr. Tracy Phillips, Dr. Stoney Lowe, Dr. Janet Hamilton, and Mr. Daryl McCant with me.
And Commissioners, today we are tag teaming a presentation and a discussion with you about the ambient air monitoring activities conducted by the agency following natural disasters. We're going to go through the lesson, results and lessons learned from those activities and events. The concentrated analysis came about, as Toby mentioned, after the winter storm, which presented a very historically unique opportunity for us as an agency. This one-time issue where we had widespread, wide-scale, full or partial shutdowns of, of industrial facilities up and down the coast. So we decided to seize this opportunity, and we deployed a tremendous number of resources. And we'll go through some of the methodologies that, that we utilized during that winter storm event. And then we're taking that data, and then we looked at other natural disaster events, and then compared it with man-made disasters and the monitoring activities that we conducted during those. And we partnered with Toxicology Division, who took all the data, you'll hear, I think, five million data points in total, and went through and has conducted a fulsome analysis of all of our monitoring activities and comparing it to, you know, those man-made disasters when we're always going to be out in force. And determining, for, for my purpose in the Office of Compliance and Enforcement, where could we best use our agency resources? And you're going to hear that data is being finalized in a forthcoming report for us. And although each event offers a very unique challenge, every event is going to be different, and it's going to offer new lessons learned for us. And Dr. Lang is going to discuss in greater detail, but the data indicates during these startup events, startup operations after natural disasters, which are often done in a more controlled environment, do not materially impact airshed quality. And so that suggests these regional wide-scale net deployments of our, of our staff to monitor ambient air conditions is, is generally unnecessary. And so then we can utilize our agency assets in a more targeted manner, in a more efficient manner, to deploy them where needed as, as issues arise during these events. And with that, now I'm going to switch to a, to a PowerPoint presentation to help guide us through the methodologies that we looked at and look at some of the events that we targeted as well. So we looked at, in this report, four different natural disaster events with Winter Storm Uri in February of 2021, and that event was unique from the other events. So Hurricanes Laura, Delta, and Harvey are, were regional impacts. So coastal impacts either hitting a discrete regional area of the state versus Winter Storm Uri, which was a statewide event. But for the purposes of this report, we carved out the data from the statewide, and we used it as a comparison with those other natural disaster events in those coastal regions. And so the coastal impacts from Harvey went from our Corpus, Corpus Christi area all the way through the Beaumont area. Same with, the Delta was more into Beaumont area, and Hurricane Laura was more Houston and Beaumont area. Winter Storm Uri hit everything. And so, but we're carving out the, the Corpus Christi, Houston, and Beaumont areas for analysis in the report as a comparison. We use as a control several of those natural, or man-made disasters that we're all familiar with over the last few years, including the November TPC event and the March ITC fire. And so I think that's a picture there of one of those unfortunate events that occurred right before Thanksgiving. To, to be clear, we're always going to deploy as many assets as are needed from the agency in a man-made disaster. That's never going to be a question. We're always going to be deploying and utilizing all of our agency resources for those, for those man-made disasters and, and making sure that cleanup is done accordingly. We're focusing on what about these startup events after a natural disaster occurs? And that's, that's where the analysis comes in and, and how we can best use agency resources because the narrative tends to be, well, during these startup events, there's also large emissions. And so that's what we're looking at. Is that, is that narrative, in fact, true? What are some of the data sources that we looked at? Well, first and foremost, we have our ambient air monitoring stations. We have a network of over 150 TCQ sites across the state, 230 sites in total with our partner agencies, including local governments. That includes over 500 different samplers and 34 automatic gas chromatograph instruments. One thing to remember, though, these instruments and these samplers are for ambient air conditions, are designed for ambient air conditions. They're not site-specific, and they're not intended for use during ER events, but they do provide useful data for us. And so we gather that data, and we're always gathering it and analyzing this. So this is one primary data source that we, that we look at. This is an example of one of our, of our, of our stations and the equipment that's out there. You know, one thing you'll hear, too, is during natural disasters, we always want to protect state assets. And there can be damage, and I'll talk later in the presentation about, you know, some of the, the effects that can happen to our ambient air stations. And so with better forecasting and data that we have available now, we're able to do more targeted decision-making on what we do with our, with our ambient air monitoring stations. In the last hurricane season, we ended up not having to take down any stations. And, and the purpose that we would take down a station would be to protect those assets from damage, from flooding, for wind damage and the like. And usually, we can stand those back up within 24 hours of taking those down. But with the more targeted forecasting that we have available, we try not to do that. But we do have, these are hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment, and so those decisions are always important. We'd rather have the, have that stationed there long-term than have it be irreparably damaged for months on end. Of course, we have now our mobile monitoring assets, and Texas is a pioneer and leader among our states in terms of use of our mobile monitoring assets. And we have three assets here in the headquarters office. And so we have a rapid assessment survey van, and that includes an equipment with an ultraviolet spectrometer technology. That's a DuVos machine. And that, and that graphic there on the far left, you'll see an image with some green lines and some yellow lines. So what this machine is able to do with this van that we've retrofitted is it can monitor up to 16 different pollutants, volatile organic compounds, including benzene, which is a common marker, 1,3 butadiene, styrene. And they can monitor in real time up to 30 miles per hour. And so this is a tremendous asset for us and allows us to cover a large amount of territory in a shorter amount of time. The legislature has provided additional funding for which we're grateful for, and we've actually got three new vans that we deployed in the fall. And so we've got three of those rapid assessment vehicle vans now deployed in regional offices in the Corpus Christi area, the Houston area, and the Beaumont area. And we have cross-training capabilities to, to shift those resources as we need to among those regions as events demand. And of course, we then still have our, our central office rapid assessment vehicle. We also have two vehicles in the central office, which we call our smart vehicles, the Strategic Monitor Mobile Air Reconnaissance Technology Van. And that includes equipment capable of monitoring up to 1,000 different compounds, not in a mobile capacity. It has to get to the site and then conduct its sampling with its select ion flow tube sampler or CIF samplers. And so those are very helpful for, for long-term events that we want to station a vehicle for and capture a large amount of data. So this data also went into our analysis in Toxicology's report, and there are some pictures of the vans out deployed in the field. Third set of data is our handheld monitoring equipment, portable chemical compound detectors. And we have ultra-ray machines, mini-rays, and multi-rays. And, and these machines, and those are trade name, they have equipment in it with photoionization detectors for detection of benzene and volatile organic compounds. The multi-ray can also detect NOx and carbon monoxide and H2S, as well as the VOCs and some other compounds. And so these are very useful for using out in the field. And so if there is an event, staff will be ready to go and calibrate that, that equipment at the office and then deploy out in the field. And you see our staff members there deploying in emergency events and during some of the natural disasters that we're talking about today.
And Craig, remind me if, if you can, is it the ultra-ray that speciates VOCs or?
Ultra-ray has a larger lot, library of VOC speciation. I can't remember the number in that library, but yes, it is a wider array.
And, and just jumping in, it specifically can speciate benzene with the ultra-ray?
Great. And then, and then in terms of digital interface, we're not having to, it's a little bit off topic, but I'm curious about it. To avoid data, the data entry issue, is that, is that a feature of the ultra-ray that the multi-ray doesn't have? Anybody know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, and Chairman, I do know, we, we had some technical difficulties putting that, that
Digital interface, yeah.
Software in place. So we're not quite there yet, but it's, but we're working on it.
Great, thank you. And go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Craig. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, General Counsel Ramiro Garcia, Deputy Executive Director. Another thing that the regions have done is found electronic ways in the meantime, as they were sorting out the software issues that we've encountered, ways to enter the data electronically. So you, you cut down the chances of trans, you know, transposing numbers and things like that. So kudos to the regions for figuring out streamlined ways to get the data entered so we can then, in large-scale events, post the data.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question as well, too. So regarding that interface we were just talking about, what's the need there? Is it money for software, or is it FTEs? Is it both? And then my second question is very much in line with that. When we're talking about these, well, I guess the picture before the vans and that kind of stuff, I'm curious, how many staff go in the vans? Is it two, you know, at a time? And, and how many FTEs do we have that are qualified, if that's the right term to use, to be in those vans and take those measures? And where I'm going with all this is if we need FTEs, if we need money, that's what I want to know because I want to, I want to get geared up now and start making, making it known now that that's something we're going to need to ask for next legislative session. So that's, that's where I'm going with that. So, and if you don't know the specific answers to that, that's okay, but let's figure that out sooner rather than later.
While staff is marshaling a response, if they want to give one, Commissioner, that's a concern that I have, too.
Yeah.
And, and it is the, it is the operators and the FTEs that I perceive as being the bottleneck. You know, the money for the equipment, we usually find that, but having the qualified people to operate it, you know.
Yeah. And to be fair, the Ledge has given us money the past couple of sessions, so.
Right. The analogy I've been using is we, the trucks aren't the hard parts, the drivers, that's the hard part.
Agree. So, yeah, I think we're saying the same thing. If we need them, that's what we need to know, right? So we can go make that request.
This looks like a Corey, Corey response. Good morning.
There's, there's two questions there. We'll take the second question first with respect to the mobile monitoring vans, and I'll have Mr. Corey Chisholm talk about the deployments that he has.
Good morning. For the record, Corey Chisholm, Deputy Director of the Monitoring Division. Commissioner, your question about the number of staff per van, we have two staff per van, typically a driver and then someone that is actually operating the equipment. Generally the same with the, the new mobile, I mean, the new regional assets, a driver and then someone operating the equipment to keep that safe. We have a total of 10 staff in Austin dedicated to the vans. I would never turn away additional FTEs. Yeah. What I typically find is we have a lot of cool ideas, and we're typically limited in, in manpower to implement those cool ideas. So would always love to have, have additional assets to do that, whether that be tools or people.
Mr. Walling, if you want to come up and talk about the regional deployments, because I want, Mr. Walling's been pioneering for us in the coastal regions. The, the technology that we have, as Mr. Garcia mentioned, pioneering use of ShareNet for getting that data into a system that we can QAQC more rapidly, even though we don't have the real-time capabilities quite yet. And, and I'd like Mr. Walling to talk about the efforts that we're using out in the field to deploy the new DuVos vehicles as well.
Good morning. Jonathan Walling, Area Director for Coastal and East Texas area. As Craig said, we have, you know, deployed three, or we have three vehicles out in the regions, Houston, Beaumont, and Corpus Christi, that have been retrofitted to house the DuVos instrument. So we, we've got those, those vehicles in place and the, the equipment there. Thus far, I think we've trained about probably 10 or so people. We're sort of staging it. We sort of rolled up the, rolled down the coast. We started in, in Beaumont and then moved to Houston, then moved to Corpus. So, so we're coming a long way with that. So I think, I think, as Corey said, we'd never turn down FTEs. There's always a use somewhere. But, you know, we'll continue to train the, the existing staff we have, you know, in the use of those instruments. And Chairman, you had posed a question about the, or no, I think it was Chairman, or Commissioner Lindley, is that something about the, the telemetry problem or telemetry issue with the communication between the ultra-ray? It's, you know, I think we have the, the technology is there. It's a matter of, I think there were some, some problems with that telemetry communicating with the instrumentation. So that's what we've been working on, on there.
To use a very technical term, it's glitchy.
It's glitchy.
So we're, we're trying to sort that out.
Well, I would just say if, if, you know, our IT staff is very capable, so this is no way a comment or a knock on them, but if we need money, you know, to help with that kind of thing, that's what we want to know, right? Or, and I know you all know that, but that's what I'm always interested in knowing, and what, what do we need help with? Because I feel like that's our job is to go ask the Ledge for that, so that our employees can then, whether it's equipment or, or bodies needed, we, they can then do their jobs like they're supposed to.
Yes.
And I think they are, for the record.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you all for the support. I did, you know, in the past, see where we were able, like I saw a map, and they were testing here in the, the Part 35 where they showed where the sample was taken. So we're close, just that, yeah, it's Jonathan, the technical term glitchiness with it. But we have, I will say, over time and lessons learned have, have been able to speed up our process of gathering the data, QAQC in it, and then getting it out there.
Yeah.
It's really important to, yeah, the data's got to be right. You can't walk it back, you know? And, and things happen, things are going quickly, so we have found ways to become more efficient. But the last I had talked to one of our folks, we're pretty close.
Cool.
Yeah, and the, the forms that we've developed to, to use in the interim until we get all this technology glitchiness figured out is, as Romero mentioned earlier, we, we actually input the data, you know, while we're in the field, and that data populates, you know, to ShareNet so, so we can see that, that information in real time instead of people, you know, writing everything down by hand in the field, emailing it up here, doing a quality review check, and then getting entered into another spreadsheet. So, so it's majorly increased the, or decreased the time in which we're able to have data and have it available.
And I'll pile on, I mean, this is all pretty recent, so even, I mean, as recent as ITC, it was all done by hand, pen and paper. So, you know, sitting over in, you know, sort of our SOC in the middle of ITC, there were just reams of entries, all handwritten and photocopied that we were then having to go back and sort of QAQC. I think the challenge here is we're almost there, as we have seen in the past, when the air monitoring data is not correct and it is attaching to places that could not be where the actual hit is, that's, that's what, that's what we're seeing right now. So we're really trying to fine-tune how we get to, to make sure that we're accurate when that stuff's going, if it's going to go live, sort of real-time, we just need to make sure it works flawlessly.
Great. Jonathan, thank you. It sounds like we're, you know, 80% there that we've, you know, largely addressed the timeliness issue, and we were improving quality because we're taking some steps out, but we still need to work out the glitches to make that final step where the machine will communicate directly, I guess, with the database. So, and then as to FTEs and funding, that's going to be a continuing conversation, I know, but I'm glad we raised it this morning. I think I'm done, are you done? Okay. Thanks, Jonathan.
Excellent. And I really have to give credit to, to Jonathan and his staff for coming up with a, with a workaround for the, for the real, near-real-time data. So the ShareNet capabilities that, that our office and our agency now has, we're really learning a lot of different ways that we can deploy that technology in the field and throughout all the regions. And so that offers us a great amount of technical assistance for improving our processes.
Craig, if I may just pile on, and I mean, kudos to the region, also Corey Chisholm and his staff, just for the pioneering work they did when they they did when they were working with EPA in the Targa bus, lessons learned, questions asked, and what works, what doesn't. But just pioneering the long hours they put in. And so with time, as we now have a force multiplier, that training regional folks to operate these vans. So if we get into a long-term event, we can give folks a break. And that was a big concern for Corey. But I can't say enough about his staff, you know, and the work they do. You know, we had an air conditioner go out and they brought it back and within hours, like a NASCAR pit crew, I swear, they replaced it and that van was back in operation. So I can't say enough also, you know, the, super proud of the region and Corey Chisholm and his staff over monitoring. Thank you.
Just one kind of question, comment. We keep using the term ShareNet and that's agency lingo that we all know. But do you want to talk about real quick what, how's the public, you know, see this? Because we, ShareNet's kind of something we all understand, but I'm not sure how that translates to the public understanding the data we're putting out, if you want to kind of walk through those steps and if you're going to later on. You can do it then too.
Yeah, internal, so ShareNet would be an, an internal system that we all, it's an internal internet that we all share as an agency. And so we can share documents and spreadsheets and databases.
And that's helpful from region to headquarters and vice versa.
We can all share it real time. So, and that helps. So folks out in the field can enter in the data or at the regional office entering the data. Headquarters staff can look at that and the QA QC teams can see that all at once. And we can all share that data. At the, during the winter storm, we, it really came to fruition for us using the shared data system because we had so much data coming in from so many different angles concerning so many different systems that were impacted across the state, from drinking water systems all the way to petrochemical facilities. And we in OCE use a very large ShareNet database spreadsheet system so we could all real time see data and advise the executive director and other offices for help and deployment of resources and tracking.
And it's a real useful, it's a working, it's a live, when all that stuff is happening, it's live, right? And so, correct me, but all that's QA QC'd, right? And then we then flip that and it goes on our webpage for the world to see, the public to see. Is that the process kind of, I just want it to be known how things happen. So people aren't thinking we have this, this secret internal website housing things that are then never shared with the public. Because that's, that's not at all the case.
No, yeah, it's used for the, to help make the process more efficient and quicker. And then when we get it to the QA QC point, that's when it goes live for the public.
Because before then, it wouldn't be useful, I would argue, right? Because it's, it's moving, it's live, we're getting data. You know, you've got to, anyway, y'all know what I'm saying.
And Commissioner, I would, just want to make sure that we're clear. We don't, we, we don't put it, make it public in every case. And it's not because we don't want to. We sort of, it's sort of a, what's the size of the event we're responding to? And how sort of, what's the duration of the event? And does it make sense to start putting that data up? But we use it internally to drive where we need to go. And if, also in informing the local decision makers, you know, just as a reminder to the public, you know, we're not the first responders, we're not the county judges. They're really the ones making the decisions about things like shelter in place and evacuations and those sorts of things. And so it's really, first and foremost, a tool for us to inform the local governments about what we're seeing so they can make good decisions regarding their citizens. And then secondly, if, depending on what that event is, then we will start putting it out publicly to sort of answer, I think, some of the concerns that the public has, depending on what that size of that and duration of that event is.
And we, we do it very quickly. That's my understanding. I mean, there's not a lag time.
So it's different from like our stationary air quality monitoring data where it goes up on Tamis, most of it in near real time QA QC'd. You know, here we're getting data inputs from the, from the handhelds, from the mobile monitors, you know. In some long-term events, you know, we'll contract for, for flyovers or have information from Aspect or whatever it may be. And that information, I think, gets communicated to the public on our disaster website, if it's, if it's that, if it's an event of that kind of profile. And it goes up pretty promptly, not as fast as the information comes to us on ShareNet because that timeliness for us understanding QA QCing and understanding the information and communicating with the local officials who are responsible, I think, is, is, is our first obligation, the most important one. But, but, you know, we, we do put it up for the public eventually on some of those events. Is that fair?
It is. And if I could add real quick, because Commissioner Lindley, you hit on something that I think is, is important. And let me put some frame of reference to why it's important. First of all, the beauty of, of our new tools is how much data we collect. And so in a lot of cases, we're collecting one second data. With the handhelds, we're collecting that instantaneous data. So we're generating a lot. And it is right now a manual process to QA QC that and then get it out there for the public. And so we are, we are looking at ways to make that better. One of those ways that, that we've been looking with regard to the vans is we've worked actually with EPA's GMAP group on a software that they've allowed us to, they've shared with us and we've manipulated that software to take these different instruments and pair the data with its timestamp, with its GPS stamp, with the meteorology associated with it, to be able to generate map products that then tell us, tell a story. And so we're really close to having some things that, that are useful now. We're coming to a show near you. We'll, we'll be sharing that with you guys and, and what we've been working on. Because I'm really proud of what staff have done with that. And it's going to be a great way to then handle all of this data in a much more efficient manner.
So Corey, how's that different from like the Caterpillar maps that we've already used? I mean, those have, those have concentration data, timestamp, location stamp on it to build that.
So the DuVos that creates the, the Caterpillar maps, as we've affectionately called them, it has that capability in, within its own software. All of our other instruments do not.
Okay.
And so this external software actually is, is built to then pull in all of that data, line it up appropriately. And, and then you, from that, you can employ GIS and things that I don't understand to make pretty maps.
Got it.
So it, it's a huge game changer for us.
Great. Thank you.
I'm going to stick my nose in to make two quick points while we're talking all around the topic. Just to, to help ground us, bring us back to the consumer world. For, for those watching from home, ShareNet is our internal name for SharePoint, Microsoft SharePoint-built data sharing system. And I want to reach back and credit where credit's due, call a, call a kudos out to the agency in terms of cross collaboration. And in, in my distant memory, I, I don't, don't think it's too very long ago, but the resident inspector is out on the ground in, in Andrews County, Texas, at a, at a radioactive waste disposal site where some of the first at our agency playing with exactly that capability, I think, really gives us some, some bridges in the, in the meantime to get our, our mobile data populated quickly through the, the mobile entry from the field. I was really pleased to, to be able to brag about how we were doing that as an early, you know, the tip of the spear encountering the most glitches. That, that was a, a good, a good effort that I really appreciate. Mr. Cook back there, Kelly, your, your team taking on that burden. I, I'm, I'm really pleased to see how that's matured and moved over to other parts of our agencies. I just think that's a real, it's very commendable for how we collaborate within our, our multiple agencies programs.
I think we, I think we might stop talking for a while and let you talk.
Great. Good discussion. So all of the data that we collected and all of the effort that went into it. And so Corey, I think will tell you, Winter Storm Yuri, we set world records for the mobile monitoring fleet in terms of the deployment that we had. We conducted over 1,200 miles of survey miles with 400 individual discreet surveys conducted during that winter storm event. In terms of handheld efforts, 1,900 individual surveys conducted by, by staff during that winter storm event, you know, representing over 9,700 different constituents. And you can see on the table there, the comparisons in terms of other natural and, and the man-made disasters with, you know, some of the man-made events. Of course, with the large-scale deployments required after those events, you know, you see the efforts put in. In terms of the Winter Storm Yuri deployments, we had 95 regional staff deployed out in monitoring efforts. And Corey's crew with the mobile monitoring fleet had 40 staff rotating through that six-week effort in, in those monitoring efforts. And these are approximate numbers that I'm, that I'm putting up here. So. Chairman Neerman, you mentioned the Aspect aircraft, the EPA's airborne spectral photometric environmental collection technology aircraft. And so we had mission assignments during Winter Storm Yuri. And that aircraft was deployed, had 24 different flights in the Corpus Beaumont and Houston areas with 13 days of over-flight operations. During Winter Storm Yuri, we also had conducted a flyover event in the Beaumont area with OGIC optical gas imaging cameras. And, and so that was just a contemporaneous effort during that Beaumont area. And so this is a fourth set of data that we can, that we can rely upon and that we're sent over to toxicology for review.
Can I interrupt just a real second? Just because I want to give credit where credit's due on the Aspect aircraft. David Gray, who has retired from EPA, was instrumental in helping us fly that aircraft quickly. And so just want to make sure and be on the record and mention him by name with EPA. And it's, I'm sad that he's not there anymore, but he was, he was really crucial in getting that, that plane up in the air as quickly as we, as we could. So I'll stop there.
Yeah, I'll pile on. EPA's been a great partner of this agency during disasters and we, you know, we really need each other in the, in those events. So it's an important relationship. Thanks, Toby.
And Mr. Garcia mentioned the Targa bus that EPA deploys. Targa's their tox, or trace atmospheric gas analyzer mobile unit. And so that will, also can get on mission assignment from, from, from our office or from our agency for deployment too. Emissions event reporting is also another source of data and it's, you know, an issue for identifying where startups or shutdowns are, are occurring. And so that's another data point that comes into our agency is emissions events are reported. And we'll, we'll look at those. And those are publicly available through our steer systems. And includes the quantity and duration of emissions in those reports. And will give us useful data for, for investigation purposes and for identifying where issues are occurring. The winter storm impacts, I want to use this as a, as an example of, of a natural disasters impact on our agency assets. And so during the winter storm, as everyone in this room is aware, we had, we had wide-scale disruption of, of infrastructure with rolling power outages. And those power outages did not avoid the TCEQ. And so in the Houston area, we had 21 monitors that lost power, six of which were operated by the city of Houston. And so that's, you know, protection and, and standing up of our state assets is always a huge priority for us. And we commit efforts as soon as it is safe to do so, to be out in the field, to help stand those assets back up. And during this winter storm, most of those assets were, were back up by the end of that week of that, of that winter storm event. We've already alluded to the, the wide-scale impact of the, of the, on industrial facilities up and down the coast, which, which provided us this unique opportunity for deployment, for air monitoring considerations. And so that's why we had over 130 different facilities in some form of, of shutdown. And we utilized this opportunity and, and did that wide net deployment. And so where did we deploy? And this, this would be similar to any other, how we would approach any other disaster affecting a regional area. We would identify where those effects are, looking at where emissions events are being reported, identifying where we can, if we know of, of facilities that are shutting down, and then identifying where we would need to monitor. And so in this case, we did wide-scale net monitoring. In the future, I think we can do more targeted monitoring where the need is. And so some of the wide-scale net monitoring that we did in the Beaumont area is, is illustrated here on the map with the darker shaded regions showing where mobile assets were deployed and the lighter shaded regions overlaying some of those areas where regional handheld monitors were also deployed out. This is in the region 10 Beaumont area. And then in the Houston area, Houston Ship Channel area, you can see the deployment schematics that we, that we had for mobile and the darker shaded areas and the lighter shaded areas with the wider handheld monitors down in Texas.
Can we dig into that a little bit? Because I think what I'm hearing you say is that we're looking at this information not, really it's, it's a question about how, how and where and when, maybe how and where we deploy these assets, not whether we deploy them. And you were talking about a, a net approach to net, net modeling. And I'm wondering if you can help me understand the, what we've done in the past and, and where we're going with this. What is the more targeted deployment going to look like? Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely. And so what I say when net, it's more regional-wide deployments. Saying what are, what are, what is the impact, you know, region-wide? And in, from the analysis of the data, as Dr. Lang will show you, indicates that there's not a wide-scale impact. So what, what we will do, of course, in our deployments is look at actual on-scene conditions. Look at where there are complaints coming in, where there are actual reported issues. And always focusing first and foremost on protection of the environment and health and safety. And, you know, we've, rather than deploying 95 staff out on a wide-scale monitoring effort, tailoring that, using our mobile assets and select teams to where actual maybe shutdown events are occurring because those are less controlled. Those are harder to predict because an entity never wants to shut down an operation. And so, but identifying if, if we're getting complaints of those areas, target air monitoring assets in those areas rather than just doing a wide-scale approach with, with a wide neighborhood, by neighborhood or region by region area deployment, focusing where the need is. And obviously, if, if there's a, in, in any natural disaster event, if there are actual emergency events, we're going to deploy there as well. And so using this more targeted approach, we have not a drain on agency assets out in the field, monitoring for a net negative, focusing on where we actually have a need.
Appreciate that. And I think it'll come into clearer focus when we hear more about the data. Thanks.
And then in the Texas City area, you can see some of the area deployments there for the mobile fleet and the regional handhelds. And then shifting to the Corpus Christi area through those major industrial corridors in that region. And with that, you targeted the, the, the last point I was going to make, Mr. Chairman. And I'm going to turn it actually over to Dr. Lang and her crew for the second half of this presentation.
And Chairman, if I may, while we switch over, one thing also that we have as a force multiplier is through Kelly Cook's side of the house is our emergency response contractors. So in situations where we can have them also come out and monitor alongside with our staff, helps us cover more area, which has been fruitful. And big thanks to Kelly, you know, for bringing those forces to bear, which has helped us a great deal in some of these incidents.
Yeah, great.
So I will just get this started here.
While you're loading up, I'll just make a quick point. Data is amazing. We love data. We've got great data. We've invested tens of millions of dollars in data. It doesn't mean anything without a health standard attached to it. We need to translate that data into usable information. And so, welcome toxicology.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Yeah, that's an excellent lead-in as, as well as the, all of the information that, that Mr. Pritzloff presented to you to talk about that analysis. So what does, after all of that data collection, what does it mean? And what conclusions can we draw from it? So I'm just going to walk you really fast through the background and goals and the data sources and that sort of thing because you've heard a lot of that already. And talk a bit about the, the way that we analyze this data. And then I'm going to walk you through each of the different kinds of data sources that, that we looked at and then kind of try to bring it back all together in our summary and conclusions. And really, like, you know, we've heard about this all morning that, you know, the air emissions from both natural disasters and from industrial accidents can lead to excess emissions of chemicals in air. And, you know, the, the source of the emissions from, from industrial accidents is, is obvious. But for natural disasters, for those people not for natural disasters, for those people not so experienced with this, the emissions really come from facility shutdown, facility startup, or from damage to the facility caused by the event. Sometimes, and you'll see it on our graphs labeled as upset. And this particularly happens for big facilities. They don't typically shut down and they're usually operating all the time, which is when they're at their peak efficiency and the emissions are lowest. And so in the event of shutting down has more emissions, starting up has more emissions. And of course, the, those emissions then have the potential to affect air quality and, you know, we're particularly interested in whether or not that air quality impact could affect public health or the environment, or do things like cause nuisance odor conditions. And so because of that, as we've heard over the years, the TCEQ has put a lot of work and effort into monitoring air quality after, of course, after industrial accidents, but after these natural disasters, when all of these facilities are starting up again, to determine if we have concerns about air quality and for public health. And so the goal of what I'm going to lead you through is that what we really wanted to do was to look at that air monitoring data that was collected during and after these different types of events and to understand how those emissions could impact negatively, impact air quality. And the overall purpose is to aid in this discussion that we're having about when, where, and how long to best deploy agency resources after natural disasters. And so the data that I'm going to walk you through that kind of, you know, addresses this goal are the emissions data and then monitoring data from startup, from stationary, which Craig was referring to as the ambient air monitoring data, for mobile monitoring, from handheld monitoring, as well as from the ASPECT flyovers. And so we looked at natural and industrial events. And so the natural events were the primary focus of the analysis. And obviously, you know, we're interested in, in particular, in the air quality impacts from NASA's startup of facilities that happen in the weeks after a natural event. The industrial events we brought on to this analysis as a comparison, as a, because they are, you know, it's kind of like what we call a positive control, where they are known events in a particular location where there was typically uncontrolled emissions of chemicals and, you know, and we had similar kinds of mass, different kinds of monitoring to evaluate that. So as has been discussed, you know, I won't spend a lot of time here. We had three hurricanes, Harvey, Laura, and Delta, Winter Storm Uri that we looked at, as well as the ITC and TPC fires. And we'd had different data available for different events. So we have emissions and stationary data for all of the events. We don't have mobile monitoring data for Harvey or TPC. We didn't have handheld data in a format that we could use for this kind of analysis for Hurricane Harvey. And the ASPECT plane didn't do flyovers for Hurricane Delta or for TPC fire, but otherwise, all of these data sets are available for all of these events. So when it came to evaluation, of course, we, so, you know, the first step was to gather all of this emissions and monitoring data as available, which had turned out to be a huge amount of data. And so I'll show you the numbers in subsequent slides. And then in particular, for the measured concentrations of the chemicals, our next step was to compare those levels to different benchmark comparison values. And that allowed us to get a count of the number of monitored chemical exceedances for each data set. So just kind of the straight-up count, how many monitored chemical concentrations were above a particular type of benchmark. And so then we just kind of put together the total amounts of emissions, the number of monitoring samples, and the number of exceedances associated with each event and for each type of data. In addition, for Winter Storm Uri, we did a separate assessment where we looked at the timing of the reported emissions, as well as when the samples were collected and when the exceedances were found. And so this helps us to kind of address that, that for how long? And it also really helped us to look at, you know, when are these emissions happening? Like kind of even aside from the monitoring data, like what's going on with the emissions over time during this event? So for the, to go back to the air monitoring data, I mentioned that we compare these, the measured values to different benchmark comparison values. And there's a lot of different kinds of those comparison values and they're kind of appropriate and matched depending on the chemical, as well as the length of time over which the data point was collected. So for the stationary ambient air monitor data, the averaging time or the time over which a sample was collected is one hour. And so, because for this analysis, we were looking at the automated gas chromatograph monitors. And so for those, that's a pretty straightforward comparison to the TCEQ's own short-term air monitoring comparison values. And that's our standard comparison that we use. For some of the chemicals, we also, instead of using the TCEQ numbers, we use the EPA National Ambient Air Quality Standards levels as appropriate. So that, the stationary data is pretty straightforward. The mobile data and the handheld, most of the mobile data and the handheld data is a little bit different. So that data, as has been mentioned actually, is collected with a one-to-six-second averaging time. And so you've got a lot of data points and it helps you kind of in space be able to track things that are going on. But when it comes to determining, say, a health effect of a one-second exposure, that can be a kind of a tricky thing. So what we did with these data points is that we still compared them to a one-hour air monitoring comparison value or to a National Ambient Air Quality Standard or for hydrogen sulfide to the thirty-minute state standard. And the idea there is that if a one-second concentration comes in below a one-hour comparison value, then I feel very confident that there are no potential health effects or environmental issues with that sample. But really, we can't draw any health conclusions if a one-second or a six-second sample comes up above a one-hour air monitoring comparison value, because it's just not, like, you know, what you can be, you can be exposed to a higher concentration if it's a very short period of time than you can if you're being exposed for a whole hour. And so, you know, we do have monitoring these six-second, one-second samples that came out above a one-hour comparison value. And so we do label those as exceedances, but it's just really important to note that, you know, we can't interpret that in the same way as we would the stationary, like a full one-hour sample that came up above. And I caveat that all through the presentation, so, and at the end, too. So just so you know, but it gives us a good place to start, anyway.
Could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
What does it take to bridge that gap? Is it possible to use some of these tools in a slightly different mode if you're, you hit a momentary peak from your mobile monitor? I don't suggest it's a wise idea to ask employees with a handheld monitor to stand in that spot where we found a peak, but is that the necessary step to disprove that side of the decision tree?
Can I attempt an answer to that? You can come back and clean it up.
Please do.
Yeah, I think, I think, given the world we're in right now, the most immediate answer is that if we have a concern that this one-second or six-second value is, could be an issue, then we bring in the monitoring resources to test it for an hour and compare that against the health standard. Now, could toxicology someday come up with a one-second standard? By the look on Subina's face, I'd say that is an enormous challenge and is not going to happen in the next couple of weeks. So it's, a lot of the monitoring that we do is just that. It's identifying sources, it's spotting potential issues, and then if we're going to make any health-based conclusions, we have to have a certain type of sample. So like EPA's ASPECT plane is great, flyovers are great. They're not measuring concentrations of contaminants in the breathing zone at time intervals that will allow you to draw any real conclusions about health effects. So it's a really important point in the whole world of air monitoring and understanding the difference between different numbers. So thank you for bringing it up. That's the world as I understand it. Now, Subina, you can clean up that answer if you like.
I couldn't have said it any better myself. That's, yeah, that's bang on. Like there's, there are more purposes to this data than just for it to come back to toxicology and for us to make an assessment on it. So if you see a number above, you know, that's above one of our comparison values, like, you know, certainly you can have the mobile van just stop and take an hour-long sample. But, and there are protocols and they do that, but also like that's just a trigger to say, okay, there's something here, we need to go and investigate. We need to look at that particular facility that's right across the road from here and see if they're emitting or bring in the IR cameras or that sort of thing. So, yeah, yeah, thanks for that. And actually, you got to the ASPECT thing, too, which I, so I was going to say the ASPECT data is the last one on this table and we don't have any comparison values for that. As the chairman said, it's, you know, these concentrations, they're being monitored, you know, a thousand feet in the air. So they're measuring kind of the chemical concentrations in a column of air. And so that can be really helpful to know that there, at a particular area, there's a lot of emissions going on and we need to look at it. But we don't really have, there are no comparison values that we can use to say, you know, something that's in this thousand-foot-high column of air is causing somebody a health impact at ground level. Yep. But we do summarize that data as well and talk a little bit about really the impressive number of flights that EPA has done for these different events. So there were, there's a lot of chemicals that are listed in the emissions data and a lot of different chemicals that are being monitored by these various modalities. We analyzed all of the chemical data, but we kind of focused on fourteen common analytes just to kind of narrow the list, because these are the ones that, some or all of these were monitored across data streams and were also reported in emissions reports. And so this includes our standard kind of the so-called BTEX chemicals, benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and the zylains, as well as other known kind of chemical industry chemicals such as 1-3-butadine and styrene. And then you can see several hydrocarbons as well on this list. So I'm going to start with the emissions data, which is, so emissions in excess of permitted amounts are required to be reported to TCEQ and are captured by the State of Texas Environmental Electronic Reporting System database. And so that's where our data came from for that. And so what we grabbed out of Steers, out of the Steers database were the event attributable emissions. So emissions that companies reported were due to the storm. And so this is the first in a series of tables with lots of data in them. And so I'm just going to try to kind of hit the high points or the sort of the take-home messages for this. So we've got the four natural events and the industrial events. The total reportable emissions for all of the natural events together were about twenty million pounds, the highest of that being from Harvey, which was about, which made up about fourteen million pounds of that, and the least for Hurricane Delta, which was the, so it's kind of like the worst storm, the worst hurricane, and then the least, you know, least worst, I guess, hurricane. They're all, they're all kind of the worst, but... And so then, almost as many total pounds were reported as emitted from both of the industrial events together, too, from ITC and TPC. So what you can see is the, so we've kind of, the total reportable emissions include all sorts of different chemicals that are being reported by these different industry or facilities being involved. But we pulled out five for a couple of different reasons. So carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide, and nitrogen oxides, we pulled those ones out in particular because they make up the majority of the emissions that are being reported. So if you look at these together, in fact, just carbon monoxide and sulfur dioxide make up more than half of the total reportable emissions for these chemicals. So it's important to note that, you know, not, of course, not all chemicals are created equal in terms of toxicity. And so these, the ones that we're often concerned about, things like benzene or 1-3-butadine, are emitted at far lesser levels compared to these other pollutants. And that is in contrast to what we see for the industrial events. So in this case, the, so benzene was kind of the big constituent of concern for the ITC fire. So you can see this enormous amount of benzene that was being emitted here. And then similarly, 1-3-butadine was the big constituent of concern for the TPC fire. And so this, there was considerably more 1-3-butadine being emitted in that case. Not shown here, but kind of a unsurprising major emission from the fire events as well as particulate matter. So that's not, it doesn't usually make up a huge quantity for the natural events, but particulate matter from fires, unsurprisingly, is also a big emission. And that'll kind of come into play when I show you the stationary monitoring data that we evaluated. So I spoke about the, this kind of additional analysis we did for Winter Storm Uri, which was looking at when the emissions, and then I'll show you later, when the monitor exceedances happened over time, you know, during and after the storm. So it's, so this particular graph is showing, so this is the time after, you know, from the, from mid-February to the end of March 2021. This is the dates for Winter Storm Uri. It was around the fourteenth to the twentieth-ish of February. And so these dashed lines are the daily number of facilities reporting either shutdown, which is purple, upset, or which is that damage-related emissions, which is in gray, and startup emissions, which is in green. And so you can see that unsurprisingly, the shutdown and upset, a lot of this is occurring actually during the storm, because that's, the storm is the reason, in this particular case, too, because of the loss of power. Like this is a lot of the reason why those facilities were having to shut down. And so you see a lot of that occurring here and then it kind of bleeds into the weeks afterwards. In contrast, the startup, well, it starts up not long after the storm finishes. And you don't see this kind of big peak or a clustering of facilities showing startup emissions at any particular time. Rather, it's actually kind of pretty constant over that period shown here until the end of March. So that kind of fundamental initial concern, which is that all of these facilities are starting up at the same time and you'll have this huge kind of bolus of chemicals being released into the environment and therefore potentially affecting human health or odor or vegetation, like that just doesn't seem to be happening with these, with, you know, what we can see from the emissions reporting.
I mean, I think it's fair to say that during periods of startup, especially where you have a bunch happening simultaneously, that the emissions are going to be more than they will be during normal operation. I think the question is, you know, does the accumulation of these startups create a condition of air quality that should be of concern? And I suspect you're probably going to get to that.
Yes, yep, absolutely, I will.
And the other thing, the other conclusion I'm drawing from this graph is, you know, the shutdown information is pretty important, too.
And shutdown tends to be more uncontrolled as opposed to startups, which are far, typically far more controlled. Yep. And so this is just another way of looking at the emissions data. The last graph is showing you the daily number of facilities reporting those types of emissions. What you're looking at here is the total pounds, in fact, this is in thousands of pounds, of emissions being reported, again, for shutdown, upset in gray and startup in green. And it shows a similar picture as what we saw with the facilities emissions, or the number of facilities reporting emissions. So in future slides, I'm just going to show the number of facilities, but if you want to see the monitoring data overlaid with the total pounds of emissions, I've got that at the end of the presentation in case you're interested. Okay, so we're going to start with the stationary monitoring data. And there's a couple of different sets of pollutants we looked at here. So, you know, to the point about PM 2.5 being a major emission from fire events, we took a look at the PM 2.5 monitoring data in the days right around the fire. So like ITC fire went on, like the response to that went on for months, but the fire itself only lasted for less than a week. So we just looked at that timeframe. And so in total... And so in total, we looked at about a thousand samples of PM 2.5 that were collected. And, um, there were actually no emissions or no exceedances of, um, of the, in this case, the, um, 24-hour, uh, National Ambient Air Quality Standard, the level of that standard.
And, and those were continuous PM, uh, 2.5 monitors that were stationary monitors near the event, not, not a mobile...
That, yes, that's correct. Yeah, these were stationary monitors within five, 10 miles, something like that, or the ones that were kind of generally in the city at that time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And there was a wind component too, at least to ITC with the plume blowing in a particular direction, so I'm...
Yeah, yeah, there is a wind component. There's also with the fires, there's so much heat that the smoke column goes up a lot, so you don't see the same kind of, um, you don't see maybe as many impacts as you otherwise would expect to because of the nature of that plume and how it moves. Yeah, but these were, like, for the ITC fire, we, we looked at the monitors all through Houston, so not just the ones that were really close to the fire.
Okay.
So in a similar way, you know, we wanted to look at carbon monoxide, nitrogen dioxide, and sulfur dioxide, because those are the three biggest, um, biggest, uh, emissions that, that we get for the, particularly for the natural events. And so we collected about 113,000 samples from the stationary, um, CO, NO2, and SO2 monitors and compared those levels, um, in this case, all, all to National Ambient Air Quality Standards. And there were only three exceedances of National Ambient Air Quality Standards of those 113,000 samples. And then similarly for the industrial events, although these aren't as big a player in, in the industrial events, um, emissions, they only had one exceedance of a National Ambient Air Quality Standard out of close to 90,000 samples that we looked at. So moving on to the stationary VOC monitoring. So again, these are the automated gas chromatograph monitors that we have, um, in these, uh, in the different regions that were, you know, impacted by the storms, by the natural events. And so we looked at, um, close to 1.4 million samples that were collected by those stationary auto GCs, those ambient air monitors, uh, across those four events. And out of that 1.4 million, there were nine exceedances of a comparison value. And eight of those were exceedances of an odor comparison value. So, um, I wanna bring up here that we have different kinds of, so these are all being compared to TCQ's ambient, uh, air monitoring comparison values, but we have different kinds of air monitoring comparison values. And so we have ones that are based on health effects. So, you know, we, we wanna keep a, a level below that certain concentration because of the potential for health effects. We also have ones that are based on odor. And the ones that are based on odor are particularly for chemicals that have a noxious or unpleasant odor and where the odor can be smelled at concentrations below which health effects occur. So, um, benzene is an example of a chemical that has an odor, but the, um, the health effects occur at concentrations below the odor level. So the air monitoring comparison value for benzene is based on its health effects. Whereas styrene, which you'll see kind of a couple of times, or 1-3-butadine, both of those are odorous at levels far below levels where they're, they have health impacts. So we wanted to make sure to point that out here that, so we're, we're talking about, you know, eight out of the nine, um, exceedances were for odor impacts. So these are things that were caused in nuisance odor conditions, possibly if it's strong enough can cause indirect health effects like nausea or headache, that sort of thing, just, just because the smell is bad, but not something that we would expect to cause a health effect. So we kind of separated those out because it's a, it's an important distinction. And in the case of the industrial events, there were about 1.1 million data points that we gathered from the stationary auto GC monitors in the vicinities of those events. And, um, still not a lot of exceedances. So three exceedances of the air monitoring comparison values, two of which were, were the benzene, um, exceeded the benzene health-based level. Although I wanted to point out something in particular about, so, so although there are not a lot of exceedances for the, um, for the industrial event, you can really see the difference, uh, in these graphs between the, you know, the impacts of air quality from the, uh, from seen after the winter storm, for example, or after, um, an event like the ITC fire. So there's a lot of detail on these graphs and, and what I'm just gonna point out here is the patterns. So these are the, um, maximum hourly benzene concentrations over, um, you can't see it, but over, over various time periods after the, uh, the events. So after Winter Storm Yuri on the left-hand side of the screen and, and after the ITC fire on the right-hand side of the screen. And so you can see that we have this one benzene exceedance with the Winter Storm Yuri, but for the most part, the, the benzene concentrations are all pretty low across all of these monitors. And I should point out too, the, uh, this dashed line is the one-hour air monitoring comparison value for benzene. It's set at 180 ppb. Whereas in contrast, you can see that for the ITC fire, although there are only two concentrations that came up above the air monitoring comparison value, there was a lot of benzene, high benzene readings that we were getting, uh, after the, um, after that event. So it's, um, I just wanted to, to point out that, that, uh, characteristic of these, these events.
And these, these are the highest readings, um, measured across all of the data points. So we're not looking at just a single monitor here.
Right. So each of those, again, it's a little bit hard to see because there's just a lot going on, but that's, I don't know, 16 or so monitors, so the data from each, from all of the monitors in the area. And so each, with each data point for each monitor being the highest one-hour value recorded for that particular day.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is that spike on, um, Winter Storm Yuri? Were we ever able to chase down...
Get that?
What, what may have caused that?
I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. Tracy Phillips for that.
And I guess if it's, if it's a matter of pending enforcement, we might wanna...
Well, yeah, there's that.
...stare away from that as well.
Could we, could...
Don't you answer without mentioning names?
Yeah.
A type of facility that did X without naming names?
So this is Tracy Phillips with toxicology. Um, I do believe that that is at a site that is under investigation for other, other reasons. I don't think that there were any emissions that we saw, uh, that were associated with it. Um, but, uh, I don't know how much you want me to say about that.
That's probably more than enough. Yeah. Thanks, Tracy. Appreciate it.
Something we're looking at. Okay. So again, going back to the, the timing of, um, of when these, in this case, when the monitoring samples and the exceedances occurred, uh, after, in, if, and for the stationary monitoring, we have data, you know, from before, during, and after the storm, whereas that's, you know, we only have data for afterwards for, for mobile and handheld, but we, for stationary, it kind of gives a, a good, uh, view of, of what this looked like in terms of our data availability. So you can see that, like, on a, on a regular basis, we have about 16,000 to 19,000 samples per day that, that were being monitored in, um, across the three regions, across the Beaumont, Houston, and Corpus Christi region on a daily basis. And then Yuri came and we lost power like everybody else, these monitoring stations lost power. And so we, we kind of lost a lot of, of data for a couple of days. And then the, um, power came on and, and Monitoring Division mobilized and, and got everything back up pretty fast. But we do have this kind of dip here. And so this, uh, altogether, I, I should've, uh, explained this graph a bit more. You'll see a couple like this. And so this gives the, this solid blue line is the total number of samples that, that have been collected over that period of time on a daily basis, the total daily number of samples. The orange dots at the bottom with the numbers above them are the, um, the, or when the exceedances occurred. And the, we gave the numbers above the dots because there's no way that you can tell the difference between three and two or, or 20, when you have a, a Y-axis that goes up to 20,000. So this, this just helps to, to show how many exceedances there were. And this includes both the VOC and the National Ambient Air Quality Standard, uh, so the, you know, CO and NO2 and SO2 measurements. And so one of the things that we did for those exceedances that we saw that were pretty far out from the storm was we actually looked at the emissions data, the emissions event data, to look and see if there were any storm-related emissions events that were in the vicinity of these exceedances that, that could, you know, reasonably be considered to be attributable to that. And, uh, in this case, when we looked at these two exceedances that happened, um, you know, five weeks out from the storm, there weren't any storm-related emissions events in the, in the vicinity. Because there's always that concern that's like, are we looking at something that's really attributable to the storm or would this just have happened, like, every once in a while, you'll have an exceedance anyway? So this kind of helped us to, to sort those out a bit. The other thing...
Sabina, if I interrupt real quick. And one of the things that complicated it in this particular instant was, you know, a lot of these plants were damaged to, and so it did take, you know, so it could be conceivable that five weeks out, it would still be related to the storm because of a pipe break or something that had happened because of the freeze.
Right.
So that kind of put, that put us in an interesting position where we were looking, you know, weeks out from the actual event.
Right. Yeah, so this kind of helped to address that question. It's not, you know, like, uh, for sure, like, it could still possibly be, but at least from, from our, from the data that we have available to us, you know, there was, um, it's not clearly related to the storm. So the other thing you can see, like, so we did tend to see with these exceedances, they, they did tend to happen earlier on in, um, after the storm and, and less likely to be, to be further out, which is kind of consistent with there being more emissions. Although it's, uh, well, I'll show you the next slide and that might help a little bit. So, so I took that same, and I wanted to separate these out just so that, like, we can kind of talk about each of the data point, the data sets apart, and then it makes it easier to talk about them together. So this is the monitoring data together with the emissions data. Again, so this is the, the, the dashed lines are showing the number of, the daily number of facilities that are reporting shutdown, upset, or startup, um, emissions related to the storm or attributable to the storm. And so this is, um, so kind of going back to the point I was making that, you know, we, these tend to occur earlier and, and so that may be because we have a lot more emissions at this earlier time, which is kind of consistent with what you might expect. Uh, although realistically, there are so few exceedances that it makes it hard to kind of draw any conclusions about the correlation just because it, it's, it's just such a rare event. And, um, I didn't point it out in the other slides, but I think it, it's something like .000% of 008% or something like that of the total samples that, that actually had exceedances. It's quite a rare event.
Can I make sure I understand the, the exceedances? Those, those are really only observed if we have a monitor that is operating for the duration to, to observe, collect the data that we can prove up? And yes, that was an exceedance. There's no, no linkage whatsoever to reported emissions from facilities. We, we only tie that to what's observable at, at a location.
Right.
Therefore, I just have to ask, is it possible that, given the, the clear drop in, in samples in that period during Winter Storm Yuri, that our mobile mon, or not mobile, our, our stationary monitors were, were simply not taking observations at a time when we might've expected exceedances to be occurring in those locations?
Yep. Yeah, it definitely is. And so that, and that's always kind of the concern, right? That, um, that, that, you know, we, we aren't monitoring during that time. Uh, one thing that, and I'll let Craig probably address better, you know, what are, what we do and what we can't do during those, um, those types of events in terms of mobilization, uh, both of the stationary and also of, of, you know, the mobile and the handheld resources. But one thing that gives me a little bit more confidence is the fact that, you know, even, so we didn't have monitors during this period where it was really high, but we, we had monitors up and running and then more monitoring available with the handheld and with the mobile monitoring, when we still had a lot of facilities reporting shut, um, shutdown and, and upset, as well as starting to report startup emissions. And we still don't see a huge amount of, of, um, exceedances of our comparison values. So it's, it's something to, uh, give me a little bit of confidence that, I, you know, we're always gonna miss something, but that we may not be as missing as much as we fear.
Yeah, it's complicated territory. And no doubt, there is some, some measure of a gap in the data there, or we don't, obviously we don't have as much data as we would like. Now, during Hurricane Harvey, we did, there were a handful of monitors that stayed up for the duration, and we do have that data. And I know that our monitoring team, you know, folks in the field, you know, they actually, they, they get those monitors up as fast as they possibly can, and power outages and damage will delay that sometimes. So, so there's a race to get those monitors back up and get that information in the, in the door. The other thing, you know, with the storm event, sometimes, you know, it's the, it's the hurricane-force winds that are gonna be a bigger hazard to you than, than the ozone level at the time. And so the meteorologic conditions, um, you know, oftentimes, you know, with the rainfall and the wind are such that you wouldn't anticipate, um, uh, problems with exposure to contaminants because they're, they're blown out. But in any event, this, the agency has been criticized for taking down its, its monitors, um, during hurricanes, for instance. And, um, the reason we do that is to protect the assets. And, you know, part of that is the financial investment in it. Another big part of it is if we lose that equipment, it's not something that you can run down to Lowe's and replace. Um, and so there's a time lag. And so not only will we be out the dollars, we will be out the monitoring data that's so important. So, um, you know, can we look into, you know, hardening and resiliency? You know, we've had those kinds of conversations. We just don't have a great solution to the question, how do you continue gathering air quality monitoring data in the middle of flooding and hurricane-force winds? So, um, interesting topic. I've said enough.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then, yeah, in this case, it was just, you know, it's, and then you have power outages and then, you know, what do you do? It's, yeah. Okay. So, moving on to the mobile monitoring data.
Hey, Sabina, when we find a logical place, and maybe this is it, I think maybe you...
Uh, yeah, I think so too, if you, if people need a break.
Yeah, all right. So the time is 10:57 and we'll take a, a short recess, maybe about five minutes or so. So the time is 10:57, and we'll take a short recess, maybe about five minutes or so. All right. The time is 11:05, and we're back on the record after a short recess.
Okay. Diving right back into the data. This is our, I think our biggest data set actually came from, from the mobile monitoring that was conducted. And so the, you know, I've already divided out, as we've discussed, by natural and industrial events. And in the case for the mobile monitoring data, there was actually different types of mobile monitoring that was done for the storms compared to the ITC fire. So I'm going to talk you through the storms and then explain a little bit more about, about what we found for the, for the ITC fire. So for the three natural events that we have, this data for Laura, Hurricanes Laura and Delta and Winter Storm Yuri, the mobile monitoring vans collected about 2.1 million data points. And that's just with 43 days of sampling. So this goes to, to Corichum's point about the amount of data that, that looking at and, and, you know, evaluating internally or even finding a place to house so that people can look at it. So out of those 2.1 million data points, we had 266 total exceedances. And that's, I didn't point out these numbers before, but that's about .013% of the, the data was exceeded comparison values. And two, there were no health exceedances, no exceedances of a health-based air monitoring comparison value. All of those were either odor exceedances, or we had, two of them were vegetation-based And so, and additionally, of those 200...
But Sabina, many of those were just one-second or six-second data points where they...
Yes.
Could not be measured against a health standard?
Right. Yeah, so these are, so it is true that, so, you know, we use the, the health-based comparison values just kind of as a benchmark, like, is it above or is it below? So that was fine. So these are the, for the odor-based values, because odors can be, can be smelled in an instant, right? So the, these levels, even if it, if it just lasted for five seconds, could still have been odorous. So for the odor-based air monitoring comparison values, apologies that I didn't mention this before, that's a more appropriate, or it could be a more appropriate comparison for the, for the more instantaneous samples.
Okay.
However, of those, those 264 points, they, they were just one-second samples. And they, altogether, there were the vast...
And I'm sorry, just to back up a second, the 266 exceedances, those include one- or six-second samples that exceed the, the one-hour comparison value?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Each one of those, 266 exceeds a one-hour odor exceed, or odor-based air monitoring comparison value, or for, for two out of the 266, they exceeded a vegetation-based. So we do have a couple of chemicals where vegetation is more sensitive than human health, and ethylene is one of them, so that, that was the case for that. Although it was very conservative, because the level is, was actually measured was ethane plus ethylene. That's what the, the monitors measured, so it would assume that all of, all of what was being measured was ethylene. And that's highly unlikely to be the case, because ethane is, is present in the atmosphere at a much greater concentration. And it, ethane is, is non-toxic in outdoor air. So for the rest of them, all of these odor exceedances, they actually, the vast majority of them are comprised with three, just three incidents. So two, two instances where the styrene odor level was exceeded during Hurricane Laura for 36 and 72 seconds, and another where it was, the styrene odor level was exceeded for two and a half minutes. So really, altogether, these 264 are like, five minutes worth of data, worth of time, actual time when, when the odor value was exceeded. So it's, the number is, this makes up most of the exceedances in general for the, for the natural events, but in fact, it's just kind of these short periods of time where odorous levels were measured. So the ITC fire, again, the monitoring done here was a little bit different. It was using a mobile monitoring van that had a, an instrument in it where we would go and park and take measurements. And those measurements, instead of being in these, what we call instantaneous, or those one-to-six-second values, these were actually 20-to-30-minute measurements. And so that is, is appropriately compared to a one-hour comparison value, and it's the kind of comparison we would make routinely. And so in this case, out of close to a quarter of a million samples were collected over the 50 days that they were sampling, there were still a pretty low percentage, just nine exceedances. And seven of those were exceedances, unsurprisingly, of the benzene health air monitoring comparison value. And again, this, this is a more appropriate comparison to that health-based air monitoring comparison value.
And those were probably moments where the, where the, where the foam was not covering the liquid, and the liquid was volatileizing off, but not on fire?
Likely. Yeah, yeah. So again, looking at the timing of this, so this is different than the stationary data, of course, and you'll see that some, a similar pattern for the handheld. So, you know, we don't mobilize until after the event, so we don't have data, we weren't, have data before, or, or during the event, but rather kind of as quickly as the agency could mobilize after the storm ended, which, and I think that this data starts on the 21st of February, 21st to the 22nd. And so we have, but with many samples collected over the following six weeks. And in this case, this Y-axis goes up to 120,000 samples per day being collected. And so we see, again, not, not a huge number of exceedances, of course, consistent with what I was discussing. And looking at these two later sets of exceedances, this was, you know, kind of one of our big sheer, like, count numbers of exceedances, but was really just a two-and-a-half-minute period where the styrene level was above its odor comparison value, and then two samples from, from even later on. And these ones, there were, as with the stationary samples, there were no storm-related emissions events in the vicinity of these exceedances. So, and then putting that together with the emissions data, it's even a bit clearer than with the stationary data, that even though we still have a lot of, of facilities reporting shutdown and upset emissions, in addition to having, you know, the, the startup emissions going on, that there's just not necessarily a correlation between the number of facilities reporting emissions and the, and, you know, how many exceedances that we saw. Like, you know, this early period is where you expect to see more, and we, in fact, didn't see more then. So, so on to the handheld data. So what we have for the, for the three natural events is 14,000 samples were collected over almost 60 days. And of those 14,000 samples, there were 36 total exceedances. 19 were of the health-based comparison values, so again, you know, our, the caveat that we can't make health-based decisions based on those, you know, one-second samples, so it's just kind of, they were above a benchmark, but wouldn't, seemed unlikely that we would expect to see health effects based on, on those. And then the other kind of half, approximately half of them were odor-based exceedances. The other thing that we did specifically with the handheld data was, we also used a background comparison value, because one of the parameters that the handheld devices measure is total VOCs. And we can't make any health-based or odor-based conclusions on total VOCs, because we don't know what those VOCs are. Like, they could be all ethane, which is, again, non-toxic in outdoor air, or they could be all benzene. And so because we don't know which of them it is, we can't, you know, we can't compare. You know, we have the other metrics to be able to assess that, but for, for that particular measurement. So instead, we use kind of a typical background level of total VOCs that we, we see in the, just kind of monitoring on a, on a day-to-day basis, and so we use that as the comparison value. And so there's just one exceedence from the natural events. And so for all of those samples, we're looking at about a quarter of a percent of those samples exceeded a comparison value. So for the industrial events, there's quite a bit more, in this case, more data that was collected for handhelds, about, close to 80, about 72,000 samples were collected. And we have a much larger number of exceedances, about 465. So half of those are health-based exceedances, and about half actually are these background exceedances. So we see a lot of, kind of just generally higher levels of VOCs, which is, again, consistent with some of these known uncontrolled events. The other thing I want to point out before I move on, you know, this is about 85,000 samples here, which, and you get maybe five, maybe five chemicals per sampling survey, so you're looking at like 20,000 individual measurements that we're taking out in the field by, by TCEQ investigators. It's just a mind-boggling amount of work, and, and I just wanted to pause to acknowledge the, you know, the huge amount of work that, that people have done to gather this data that we analyzed.
Yeah, okay. So, a couple, a couple of thoughts, real quick.
Yep.
Yeah. Kudos. It is an incredible effort, and, and they don't get the appreciation that they deserve. I was just thinking, the same goes for the folks who crunched all the numbers to go into today's presentation. That, I would not want that task. That's an enormous amount of work, too. And then unrelated point, I just wanted to play with the word you just used, "out in the field." This isn't "out in the country, in a literal farm field somewhere." This is, you know, mobile monitoring vans parked at the fence line, parked next to the fire, handhelds next to the event, stationary monitors that are at the fence line in the communities where we expect to find issues, if we're going to find them, where there is a concentration of regulated activity. So we are, we are in our monitoring, you know, looking out and intentionally biasing the data to, to, you know, the most susceptible, the most, the areas where there is the greatest risk of potential issues. I just wanted to point that out as well, that we're really trying to find problems.
Chairman, if you don't mind, I have a layer on top of that, that in ITC in particular, we were watching the wind closely, and staff was actually adjusting and being deployed based on wind direction, to be down, downwind of, of the event, to make sure that we were capturing where those emissions would be moving to. So, so there was a lot of track, during ITC, tracking wind and sort of moving staff around throughout the entire event.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. And it, it's a good point that I didn't, I didn't bring up. We tend to see more, like, as a percentage, more exceedances from, in mobile compared to stationary, and more in handheld compared to mobile. And a lot of that has to do with where you can go, too. Like, the stationary are where they are, so they may be close to the emission source for that particular event or not. Mobile, you know, you can get closer to that specific event, but still in the roads. And then handheld, you can get even closer. And so it, it's consistent with what we see, too, that we tend to see the most exceedances percentage-wise for, for the handheld, for people getting in the field, but also, but in, in the field next to a major facility.
Yeah, you can continue to use that word, "field."
Yeah. Yep. And so this is the, the timing of the handheld monitoring data in, for Yuri. And in this case, so we've got, the blue line is, again, the total samples that were collected over time. In this case, I've also included this brown line, and that brown line is the number of detections. So this is any measurement that was made above zero on the, in the, on the sampler. And, because that kind of gives us an idea about the pattern as well. So these are, you know, the vast majority of these, of course, aren't exceeding any level, but they're just measuring anything, and you can kind of see how that goes down over time after the event. And then we have more of the exceedances kind of clustered early. We didn't see any of those later exceedances that we, we needed to look back and see if there were any associated emissions events with. And then, you know, of course, layering this back on with the, with the facilities emissions data. And you can see, again, like, these, these are happening earlier, earlier on, also when we have more samples being collected, but not particularly, again, correlating with the number of facilities that were, were reporting different kinds of emissions at any time. Like, so, you know, at this earlier, this first week, when you had the most facilities reporting emissions, we only had one, and then, you know, somewhat more in the later timeframes. So there's just not a clear correlation between just like the sheer number of facilities reporting emissions and the, the number of, of... reporting emissions and the number of exceedances here. So I'll just briefly talk about the EPA aspect data. Again, we can't make any comparisons with this, but I did want to point out that for the natural events, Harvey and Laura and Yuri, the EPA sent out in total 43 flights with 300, close to 350 data collection runs, and detected 185 different chemicals in that time period, too. And this is something to try and see if there are any facilities or any areas that need to be followed up on the ground with, for potential sources. And then they also did flyovers, 26 flyovers for the ITC fire with close to 200 data collection runs, and detected 38 chemicals, or had 38 chemical detections. So I'm just going to give you a quick summary and our conclusions, but, and I'm going to start that summary just with a, kind of, an overall timing graph. And there's yet another graph where there's a lot of stuff going on, and I'm just going to kind of emphasize the high points here. And that is that, so this is the, on the Y-axis is the number of days into the event when an exceedance was measured. Each one of these dots represents an exceedance, and the different sizes are number of exceedances, the different colors are the types, so like odor or health. And so in general, we tended to see them in the first couple of weeks, a little bit more so than Yuri. And looking at these kind of outlier points, the only one where there's, there was a potential emission event in the vicinity was this one outlier point at about three weeks, three and a half weeks after Hurricane Harvey, where there was a, an emission event that was reported in the vicinity. Although, again, not necessarily attributable, but, you know, it does correlate with that. So altogether, for the natural events, we looked at approximately 3.6 million data points. And of those 3.6 million, there were only 311 data points that were above a health or odor-based comparison value. And that's about .001% of the data. And in fact, of those 311, most of them, 288, were odor exceedances. And this may help explain, you know, the odorous reports that we see in the media are just, you know, people's general experiences that they've, they've had more odors. You know, that is kind of consistent with that. And when there were health exceedances, so there were 23 health-based exceedances, only four of those were at an appropriate comparison value, so the other 18 were all instantaneous. So only four were at a one-hour averaging time of the measurement. And when those did occur, they were typically only marginally higher than the comparison value, and they were transient in nature. And so it's an exposure, if somebody was exposed to that, that we would not expect to result in adverse health effects. So for the industrial events, we looked at about 1.6 million data points. And for those, out of those 1.6 million, we saw 215 health-based exceedances, 43 odor-based, and 220 background VOC exceedances.
Can I pause there for a second?
Yep.
So, on the odor exceedances, we don't know whether those would or would not have also health implications. Right? We're just comparing them against an odor value?
So we do know, yeah. And that's actually a good point. So the chemicals that have an odor-based comparison value, we also derive a health-based comparison value. So if it comes up above the odor, we want to see if it's actually at a health level. None of the measured concentrations of the chemicals that came out above their odor-based comparison values came even close to their health-based comparison values.
Okay. So those odor values, and let's see, we're identifying 288 there. We looked at all of those, and none of those exceeded the health-based values.
Health-based, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And then on the, the actual exceedances of the, what's the math? Is it 23? Difference between 311 and 288?
Yeah, it's 20, yep.
Health-based values, those exceedances, we don't know, some of those are one- or six-second samples being compared against a one-hour value, so we can't really draw any conclusions.
Right, yeah, 19 of those.
But we think that we're being very conservative in those, in that, too.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, yeah.
I'm with you. I don't know if that was clear to anybody else, but...
No, I appreciate the clarity.
But we're good.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I've tossed a lot of numbers at everybody today, so, yeah.
I'm good. Thank you.
No problem. So when it came to the, the timing of the emissions and the exceedances that we looked at for Winter Storm Yuri, what we found was that really most monitored exceedances did occur in the first few weeks after the event, and the ones that occurred later were rarely, really, in only one circumstance, in a location that had a reported storm-related emission event. And generally, as I've spoken about, there's no, there were no clear correlations between the number of facilities that had a storm-related emission event and the number of monitored exceedances of comparison values that we saw. And again, to emphasize the point that, it was quite clear that the number of facilities that were reporting startup emissions were pretty constant following the storm. So we don't see that clustering that has been expressed to us as a major concern, that everybody's going to start up at one time and release this huge amount of emissions over a period of a couple of days that could impact air quality. That just doesn't seem, the data just doesn't bear that out, that they just kind of, they seem to start up slowly and carefully over time. And so just as a kind of overall conclusions and a couple of final notes, that the, really, one of the major takeaways is that the monitored exceedances of comparison values from the monitored data are very rare after natural events. And they're typically exceedances of odor-based values and only rarely of health-based values. And really, these occur in the first couple of weeks. And the, when we did look at the industrial events, the exceedances were more likely to be for health-based values rather than the odor-based values. And I also wanted to point out that, you know, we, various mitigating, exposure mitigating activities take place during industrial events, like shelters in place, those sorts of things to help decrease people's exposure to those potentially more concerning levels of chemicals being measured. I had to put the same caveat on this slide that I've put on many slides, which is, you know, the caution against the drawing health-based conclusions from the one-to-six-second data. And I also wanted to point out that, and I think it's important to do so, that regardless of weather, chemical concentrations that are measured that are exceeded comparison values, if a facility reports an emission of a chemical in excess of permitted amounts, the TCEQ will investigate and take enforcement action where appropriate. And so I would just stop with the acknowledgements. Again, we can't say it enough, the hundreds of TCEQ staff that gathered this data, they conducted investigative work, that did data validation and quality assurance and investigative review of emissions reports, as well as the team of toxicologists that I have with me today, who spent many, many, many hours, many hours analyzing this data and then looking at it again, and then double-checking all the numbers, and, yeah, they, coming up with new ideas, they did a fabulous job. And with that, any additional questions or further discussion? Happy.
Happy to help.
Bobby, Emily, questions?
You know, I always do. I just want to observe that, I'm grateful for you including these additional slides at the end. They were helpful for me to flip back and forth between. I think, I think I'm really pleased with how all the data were presented today, and I think, frankly, there's two ways to look at this. The number of facilities reporting events is a really useful analog to chart out versus the total universe of reported emissions. If a huge number has been reported to us, but it's only a small number of facilities, that's a little less, or more alarming in the public's perspective than it is for ours, but it's a huge deal for us. The number of facilities immediately complicates and multiplies the lift that we have to face. And these disasters are not, any of these events are not perfect laboratory conditions for all of our resources are perfectly working and ready to be applied. It's always in the real world, and there's always going to be more than one of these facilities. So I'm really pleased with the focus on the number of reporting entities. And I just want to acknowledge and thank you for including the graphs that show the total amounts as well, because we're not trying to hide the ball in anything. This is the focus on what our agency's mission really plants us right in the firing line, and we have to face that task. Where can we allocate our very finite resources? And again, kudos to reaching beyond where we have capability. We rely on emergency response contractors to go out into the field and supplement our workforce and our staff and tools. I appreciate the problem here, and there is a real problem that seems to pull back to reported emission events. It continues to exist as a problem for everybody. Industry are always going to be, I think they've, I've heard from many entities and industries space that they're overly cautious, overly conservative in all of the emission events data that they report to us. They want to overshoot it rather than undershoot it. And so they attach a big caveat to any of their emissions event reporting data. I think there's a large, a large voice in the, from the public that is credulous of a lot of those reports and numbers and questioning it at every step of the process. That immediately calls our agency to task of, how do we prove up what we've arrived at with, this is the acceptable enforcement action, or the advisory to the public, or what our action is we're taking? I really appreciate that we're caught in the middle. We're in a push-pull here, and I am grateful for our efforts to really zero in on this. And it's, looking at those two graphs, the two sets of graphs, the number of entities reporting, then looking at the total volume, we've zeroed in a little bit on the tricky period of time where this natural experiment that we've been able to take advantage of in startups happening all across the various regions of our state in a manner that we can really get good, good data and good observation on it. I can't imagine a universe where that would exist for startups or upsets. I'm not sure how we would ever expect to have all of these assets prepared and ready to get this sort of a look. So I'm really grateful for us doing this heavy, intensive after-action look. I will just push back on the public, saying we don't do enough, and we shut off monitors in advance of storms because we don't want to get data. I don't think that that could be further from the truth. And I think that, had we an easy and readily available answer to this, we would have already adopted it. And so as, as the researchers out in our state's universities and other universities in our country and the world, and industry is continuing to wrestle with these problems, I just want to call on everybody to come, bring any ideas you have to us in terms of how we can try to better, better build this mousetrap to address a lot of these concerns. There's an obvious, clear gap in a winter storm with a loss of power. This is a little different than a hurricane, and we don't want to build all of our agency's processes around just that one case, because we have to be prepared for every eventual issue that might face our state. But acknowledging that there is a clear potential for a gap to emerge, what other tools do we, do we have to try to bring into our toolbox? And I'm grateful for y'all looking at that. I just encourage you to be as expansive and as open-eyed as possible in trying to consider what's out there. And if there's a way that we can begin to take advantage of some of the new, lower-cost monitors that are being deployed out in a few different parts of our state now, and I'm pleased to see that we've, we've had partners in the El Paso Airshed, in Paso Anoche, on both sides of the border. That's a new tool that I think is going to bring a lot of vibrancy to that conversation around the challenges facing that community. But in the same manner, I'm optimistic that that piece that's already in motion can be better utilized from our agency's perspective with this, better-informed data, data reflection, and looking at that very critically. So I'm really encouraged with what we're hearing today. No question there.
Thanks, Bobby. Emily?
I don't have any questions, and I wasn't going to say anything, but I just thought of one thing I will say. You know, I tell people all the time, and so probably everyone in this room has heard me say this, that I don't think, and I did not think this until I left TCEQ and, you know, had a very, very brief job at EPA, but I don't think Texans will ever appreciate what we have going for us. Our air monitoring network is beyond impressive, and the efforts this agency and others go in order to protect the environment, human health, will never be appreciated to the extent, and we all know that, everyone in this room knows that, I'm preaching to the choir here, but I feel really passionately and really strongly about that. And, you know, arguably, you could say, well, yeah, we have more industry than most states, right? So we should. We should have more extensive monitoring and that kind of stuff. And I just, I just think we do. I don't think there will ever be any appreciation of how much this agency does to protect people. And so I'm, I'm just very appreciative of the work that's been done. There's hundreds of employees that have piled in hundreds of hours on this. And regardless of the outcome, we have the data, right? I mean, if the data had said something different, then, yeah, we would be taking that data and running with it. And so, you know, I don't, I don't think we did this exercise in order to prove up a point we were trying to make. I think we just took the data, and this is what the data says. And so I'm just, I'm very grateful for all the work, and I'm just, I'm very grateful for all the things that we already had in place before this report was put together, because it just, while we can always do more, Texans have it very, very good. And I wish there could be a greater appreciation for that, but anyway, that's kind of a different soapbox, so I don't have any questions. Thank y'all.
Let's see. I probably have a few comments. I mean, does, do Texans appreciate what we have in terms of air monitoring capabilities and data? They don't? You know, I think it's, I think it's incumbent on us, and we're never going to fully close that gap. I think it's incumbent on us to do what we can to close that gap. So, and many of you have heard me say this many times, but, you know, you need an above-average facility with technology in order to get monitoring data out of our TAMIS database. And it is an incredible resource. It's public. It has near-real-time data, and, you know, it's out there for all the world to see and to benefit from. But, you know, we have an ongoing project, and there are all kinds of IT hurdles to get over to get there. But translating that data into a more user-friendly, you know, average citizen format is something that's important to me, and I think should be important for this agency, just in terms of providing better customer service to our citizens. And I guess I wanted to ask Craig, so what do you do operationally in response to the analysis? You know, what are your takeaways from the analysis that toxicology has just laid out? How do we approach disasters differently in terms of how we do air monitoring?
Yes, and one thing I'll say is, building on the support for our office and our, in our agency, we have one of the most important missions as an agency, of any agency in the state. And we have a group of staff members that are completely committed to that mission, and it's demonstrated in the voluminous data points that we were able to send over to toxicology. And, you know, the winter storm was a prime example of the dedication of our staff, while they were without water, without power, you know, using their cars to power their computer system so they could continue to respond. And what this data shows is the Herculean effort that staff put in to gather data after that winter storm event, and then looking at all of the other work that we did as an agency in other events. And so, moving forward, I'm pleased that we've got some new assets at our disposal. And so, you know, Corey was telling me that, we already have $5 million of assets built into stationary monitors along the coast. And now we have hundreds of thousands of dollars of assets put into mobile monitoring vans. That's a real game-changer for us as an agency and at the region office level. So, you know, where we had assets, we still have assets deployed here in the Austin office, there's a time delay in getting those assets stood up, readied, staff out to where there's an issue. We now have those deployed out at the regional offices. So the time delay in getting those assets stood up, everything QA QC'd and standardized and out into the field, there's a huge time savings there. And I can't wait to see how they're going to be used out in the field. We're already deploying them. We've already had an occasion to use them in emergency event, and we're using them in coordination with on-scene investigations. So as I said before, every disaster is different, and, you know, we don't want disasters in the state of Texas. And thankfully, this last hurricane season, we escaped large-scale impacts on our coast. Will that happen in the future? I don't know, but we're going to be ready when and if it comes. And what that data shows is, to the extent that we can get out as quick as we can, we will deploy where needed. And what this shows is, after the event, you know, as these facilities are standing back up, we can do more targeted... back up, we can do more targeted analysis, you know, looking where there are complaints, looking where we know there are issues that have been reported to us, and targeting mobile monitoring assets and investigative resources to there rather than doing these wide-scale analyses. Because I think we've done that now. We've got the data to show what it shows, and it shows that, of course, during the event, during the disaster, when Mother Nature's throwing its worst at us, that's when there's going to be problems. And the challenge will be, how quickly can we safely deploy as an agency to, to those areas? And there's always going to be a tension there. Oftentimes, our agency is, may have a regional office that's dealing with damage or other assets, and staff members may be dealing with, with personal trauma. And so we have to get over those hurdles. But the data shows and our, and our experience shows, we do what it takes, and our staff sacrificed so much to do what we need to do to fulfill our mission-critical functions for the state of Texas, which is protecting human health and the environment for everyone.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate that.
Could I ask a follow-up question on that topic?
Yeah, please do.
Or pushing, urging just a little bit further. Given, given the data that suggests the bulk of the reported emissions occur during the shutdown and the upset period of these events, and given the potential, exactly as you mentioned, of that local, local impacts on our staff there in those regions that are affected, are there changes or tweaks to the policies? And given that we've, we've now matured as an agency, that we've got luckily some of these mobile assets in our critical, critical regions as well as here in HQ, how, how do you think we might utilize our HQ assets or the other regional assets in terms of our agency's processes, in terms of anticipating, to the extent, whenever we possibly can, there may be a storm coming, there may be some event on the, on the horizon? Will we expect to see our, our agency processes intruded upon and impacted a little bit early in earlier because there's, there's more value, it appears, to get our assets out quicker and sooner, the ones that, that are not tied to the grid or are not tied necessarily to the same constraints that we have with our stationary monitors? Or is, are there still some, some impediments that remain for us to reach that point where we really have a quicker dispersal of some of these assets that we now have?
It's always a vault.
Craig, you might find, jump in on this one. Sorry, Commissioner, the, I think, number one, you know, I'll talk about natural disasters that we sort of see coming, a hurricane. Typically, as you know, we pre-deploy resources on the front end of those storms. Sometimes down on the coast where it's going to hit, obviously Harvey hit multiple places, hit the entire coast. So that one was a little, you know, we had multiple deployments. I think what we have now is the ability to handle a Harvey from a mobile monitoring standpoint and from a handheld standpoint. And we have DuVos, as, as we noted, now in the regions, which I think allows us to get out quicker so we're not having to go from a deployed site. And we will have trained staff in the region for those, so we'll be able to get, you know, on the ground quickly. I think ultimately, the, the biggest challenge here is safety and sort of the decision of when does it, when do we go and when do we not go? And do we have the, the ability to? So are the roads open? Do we even have the ability to get into the site? Are we getting in the way of first responders? And so sort of the, there's that tension of when is it safe to send them in to start doing this sort of work? And so I think that's, that's a question that we always wrestle with on the backside of this. And then, you know, Winter Storm Yuri was obviously a different issue in that we had road issues, and we had, our staff was absolutely impacted in their homes by, by that storm. And so that had a direct impact on what we were able to do from a human asset standpoint. It's not lost on me. Let me go back to the, I think, the graph that you keep sort of going back to. It's not lost on to me, or lost on me what that graph shows. And so what we're trying to do is figure out, how do you, how do you bridge that gap? I, right, at this point, you know, I think this, this, this exercise has been great in sort of helping us identify where, where those things are. I don't have a good answer for you yet. You know, if we have no power to our stationary monitors, we have no ability to, no power to our regional offices, hard to get fuel as well, let's add that to the, you add all those compounding things together, I would say we got out as quickly as we could, but we are constrained by sort of the environment that we're going into. And so it is a challenge that I think we will continue to be wrestling with on our side and in trying to make sure we can get better there. But, but at this point, you know, I think we're getting in as quickly as we can with the tools that we have. And, and we've worked hard, and I think the tools that we have are putting us closer and allowing us to get in quicker, but is it perfect? I don't think it is at this point, but we can, we'll keep striving for it and moving in that direction. So, and Craig, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
And Craig, I'm sorry. I like to add one, one other thing, too, that we've done over the years is the disaster response strike team. And so we've trained up all our investigators throughout all the regions. So for example, I mean, logistics, like if Houston's going to get a hurricane, then assist a regional office, answer their phones, handle logistics. But then from all the regions, we have team members that are trained to come in and can seamlessly come in and back those regional folks up because they may be dealing with their own issues at their home. So that's really for us proven to be very fruitful to help, as a force multiplier, to have other regions come in and do work. And Toby hit the nail on the head that the stressful part is, you know, when do we send folks in, when do we get folks out on the road? When the roads are passable, it's safe. Each one is different, but really happy with the work. And we had a, someone commented to us, another agency, there was a disaster, and it was Anthony Buck and I think Renee DeGuardi. Anthony here, Renee's in the Corpus office. And I don't think that, at that point, they'd ever met, but they got in and started working the issue, and the comment was like, how long have y'all known each other? It's like, well, we just met officially in person now. It's like, wow, it seems like you guys have worked well. It's all the drills that, you know, Kelly's group helps coordinate with his crew, but that, that force multiplier of other regions are on standby, and they're ready. Those are always the first calls. And Randy Ammons would call and say, hey, my, my folks are ready in Lubbock to come down. Just let us know. So that's also proven to be really helpful. But Toby nailed it. It's the hard part is when do we come in? Thank you, Craig.
And I'm going to queue up Cory and Kelly because I want to, you know, one thing that we do as an agency is we plan, and we, for hurricanes, you know, we have a H-120 plan. And so as we build in with, with Jonathan and the regional directors, how to use these and deploy these new assets most effectively and as quickly as possible, that's something we're going to continually evaluate, and we're constantly in an after-action review phase. And so looking at this data, it was extremely important for us to analyze this and see it all together, and because it does paint an interesting picture for us and allows us to be more nimble as an agency. And so getting out there as quickly as we can will be dependent upon, one, the disaster and the conditions out in the field, but we do try and do that as quickly as possible. And Cory's group has been working with Jonathan's group to help train up and work on processes and procedures for deployment of central office equipment as well as regional equipment. And so we can cover more ground and have those processes and procedures. And I'd like Cory and Kelly to talk a little bit, some of our disaster planning that we've been ongoing. Thanks. That's exactly what I was stepping up here to add on to what Toby was saying is, we learn as we live through each one of these, and we sharpen our plans. And we've added to not only the stationary planning, but now the mobile planning. And so it's not, it's not sufficient to just, when the storm hits, now we come in and prepare everything. We're preparing things days, weeks in advance. Once we know there's a potential impact or risk to the state, we're starting to prepare. And so not only are the assets prepared, but the staff are prepared. We can only control the things that we can control. I can't shorten the distance between here and Beaumont, but I can be ready to go as soon as it's, as Toby mentioned, safe to go. And so we've expanded our, our disaster plans to not just include hurricanes now because obviously we've lived through a different type of disaster, but also to make sure that all of our assets are ready to go as soon as it's safe to go. So that was the point I was wanting to make, and I'll turn it over to Kelly.
I was going to add one thing on to that. I was going to make the comment that this is very unlikely. I will caveat by saying that, but, you know, yeah, we've talked about natural disasters and those being hurricanes and that kind of thing, but there's other natural disasters that happen. And I know we like to be forward-thinking, and I would just challenge us, and this probably comes down to having to ask for money and people at the end of the day from the legislature, but I'm from West Texas. I make that known, but there's tornadoes, there's other natural disasters. And getting a vehicle from Austin to El Paso or Austin Amarillo, we just need to be thinking of, you know, bigger picture here, right? And I'm not saying no one is. Y'all, y'all have these discussions all day long, I know, but if we need to go ask for more vehicles to make sure that whole half the state is, has more coverage and more FTEs or whatever it is we might need to do, we need to do it, right? Because we have a responsibility to the entire, entire state, not just those regions that are hit the most. I, we need, I think we're doing a good job of taking care of them as best as we can, and we might need more resources down there as well. But, you know, I would just challenge us to think about, there's fires, right? I mean, and we could, there's all the kinds of scenarios that could play out, and luckily they don't happen infrequently at all, but, you know, there's a lot of operations out west, and so getting a vehicle from Austin to there is a best-case five-hour drive. And anyway, you know, you're nodding your heads because I know you think about this and you're already having discussions about it, but whatever we need to do in order to help make sure that this agency has the resources it needs to have to make sure the whole state is covered, you just got to let us know, right? And then we can, we can do our job or what I feel like our job is and go ask for those things if that's what it takes. Anyway.
And thank you, Commissioner. And Craig mentioned, and you kind of segued into, into what he mentioned to me, is reminding about, we have, we do burn forecasts. As you mentioned, we have fires. We do a burn forecast. We do now the freeze forecast that we're providing through the winter so that we can kind of anticipate impacts that might happen out in the oil and gas area of the Permian Basin. Having the meteorology staff that can do that is very important, and so we've been down a meteorologist. Getting qualified people in, being able to actually compete with external pay to get those folks in is very important. But those are also ways that we're trying to help gain more knowledge and plan better. Those feed into our plans.
I'll bring Kelly up to add some nuance as well.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Kelly Cook, Deputy Director in the Office of Compliance Enforcement over the Critical Infrastructure Division. I would just like to add that I believe this study has validated, you know, one major point, and that is, it's vitally important for our agency to have our resources out at the scene of the disaster as soon as possible. And fortunately, that's something we're very good at, and I'm proud to say that we are, if not the first, always among the first agencies in the field following major disaster. We work closely, closely with TDM, Texas Division of Emergency Management, the State Operations Center, and many of our other state and federal partners, and we track the, the natural disasters, if it's a hurricane, the forecast. We track those, you know, sometimes weeks ahead of time, sometimes just a few days ahead of time, depending on, on when it occurs. The forecasts are getting much better from Hurricane Harvey to even to Hurricane Laura in 2020. They're, they're more accurate as far as where landfall is projected, but they're still not an absolute. So even though, you know, we have a hurricane coming in, we don't know exactly when and the time of landfall, but we're very good at, at pre-positioning our assets and getting in as soon as it's safe to get our, our folks on the ground. You know, we don't want to become part of the disaster and be a drain on the resources, but we, we do want to be there to get our resources in the field and collect the vital information and provide that vital support that we do. And so with that, we will continue to get better with each disaster based on our lessons learned. And the things that you heard here today, I would say, you know, you know, years from now, we'll have added many, many more innovative technology solutions to how we respond. I look forward to being part of that and making the response better year to year.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate that. I think my, you know, one of the big takeaways I have from this is that after a big, especially natural disaster where you have a lot of simultaneous startup events, that, that is, generally speaking, not a problem, not something that we should be worried about. Like, you can imagine a world where you look at all of the, you know, this, this aggregation of startup events would correlate strongly with numerous exceedances of, of air monitoring and control values. That just isn't the case. It's actually almost rare. There, the data just doesn't show that. So I am not worried about the startup period at all. Now, asterisks to that, there is always the potential for individual upsets of one nature or another, and I think those are the kinds of events that can actually pose a risk. And so for that period, you know, after a big disaster, I think the game is, as we've heard a lot of people speak to today, it's how do we get there quicker and tighter? And that's, you know, honing our processes, you know, doing the after-action reports and lessons learned, getting new technology and assets that, that's, you know, lighter and quicker and, and, you know, already in the field, so to speak. So, so right now, we're just playing that game of tighter and quicker, and there's a lot of value to be realized out of that. What remains, and this is kind of the challenge on the horizon, is what do we do about that data gap where hurricane-force winds, floodwaters, no power, and there are a lot of shutdowns, a lot of upset events? How do we evaluate the risks that that might pose to the public? And that's the nut that we need to, to crack somehow. And so anybody who has any ideas, you know, we welcome them, our, our local government partners. If you have ideas about how to monitor air quality during hurricane winds, floodwaters, and power outages, let us know. Same for our federal partners, you know? Let's talk about this and try to find a way to, to answer this question. I would suggest, though, that we don't necessarily need to find a way to harden all of our infrastructure in order to collect that data. There may be some ways that we can, you know, do pilot projects and so forth to answer that question. But, you know, I think that, that filling that data gap effort is a project for another, for another day and another conversation, and we've been at it for a while this morning. But I really appreciate the report. I think it helps demonstrate some important lessons. I appreciate all the work that's, that's gone into it and this, you know, current effort of just getting, you know, tighter faster on our monitoring response. And I'm worn out. I think I'm about done. Toby, you look like you might have had something to say.
No, just, you know, it's an interesting conundrum because, and I'll just go back, you know, Hurricane Harvey or Yuri, these, these natural disasters, when there is that gap, we can also assume that there's probably not a lot of people out at that time. And so how do we, so while that gap does exist, how do we address that in a way that's meaningful when most people are probably inside sort of hunkering down? And so, so just getting, point that out, that it's not like, you know, it's not a normal workday where, you know, there's, you're millions of people out and about enjoying the city of Houston, you know? So that just said, that one caveat in there is we sort of think through this, because I think it is important, because we hear the narrative a lot about, well, the, the things were taken down. It's like, well, there was a hurricane going on. I'm not exactly sure there were a lot of people out that day. So, you know, just, we have to, we also think about just sort of, you know, we kind of sprinkle some common sense over it, too, as far as like, how do we bridge that gap? What makes sense? When you talk about costs, safety, decision-making and planning, you know, that is something else that we do, that we do, it is a reality of a natural disaster.
And the other one is the weather itself. Do you expect a, you know, a benzene plume to linger in tropical force winds or driving rain? Probably not, you know? So all that needs to go into the mix, but again, I would reserve that conversation for another day, probably. Wonderful work that went into the report and all the monitoring efforts that went into to make it possible. Thank you. Anything else from the staff?
Thank you for the time today to present this information and look forward to the final report coming out from toxicology.
Thanks, Craig. Colleagues, anything else for the good of the order? All right. I think we're done, then. So Ms. Smith, I'll ask you to please call the next items.
The next items, items two through five are for executive session, and the commission will not be meeting in executive session today.
And with that, the time is 11:59, and we are adjourned. And with that, the time is 11:59 and we are adjourned.